What's going on everybody, this is Lady Luck here again. Okay. Mama has to multitask, so I'm not able to come on camera normally. I try to do my videos about Super Stupid while I'm outside walking or driving in the car. But uh, not able to do that right now. Either way, I have to react to this video. So this is Hannibal is Hungry again, I enjoy his content. I absolutely uh, enjoy his reporting on it. It's so calm and cool. And of course you've got O'Shea D. Jackson, Nate the Lawyer, Pink Book Lessons, uh, Southern Confidential. You have a lot of, you know, other fantastic uh, Youtubers that are reporting on the nonsense and buffoonery that will not end somehow on his own accord at Dalton and Thornton with Super Stupid Mayor Tiffany Henyard. So until the FBI comes kicking indoors and taking names and whooping asses. Um, I would, because Lord, I hope they do that televised. Um, I want to react to this video. I want to be able to give some commentary on it. I did a video, I think last week regarding the issue with the firefighters. It was like a part two of uh, reaction from the Thornton Township uh, Town Hall Meeting. And then of course, the reporting about the pension and healthcare plans of the firefighters not being paid. And they have every right to have insurance. They have every right to know that their pensions are secured, but premiums weren't making its way to Nationwide. And their claims are being, the firefighters' claims are being denied. And I said, at least in two separate videos, that the firefighters have way more power, especially with them being established as a union than most people are trying to give them credit for. They're gonna have to stick together and stand up for themselves and they're gonna have to file a lawsuit. It's not a matter of if they need to file a lawsuit. It's a matter of when the lawsuit will drop. Because that is going to be the only way to get Super Stupid, to go sit the hell down somewhere and not touch their pension and their healthcare plans. And I just don't understand why the police department won't follow suit and take a look at their financials to see if any of their pensions and healthcare plans are in jeopardy because of unpaid, you know, uh, premiums that are coming out of their paycheck supposed to be going to an insurance company. If they could stop being corrupt for five minutes, probably they would uncover that they're having the same situation. But because it seems like no one wants to use the common sense that God gave a Billy goat on the Dalton Police Department force, especially with the biggest goon of all, their chief, who takes time to chase Jedediah through other districts in unmarked vehicles running license sirens, but won't sit down and actually do some real police work. He needs to be under investigation and I'm just not gonna let up on that because that was unlawful what he did. But either way, if they were stopped for five minutes and look at their financials and see if their pensions and insurance plans are safe, they may find that it's not. If she did this to the firefighters, I have no reason to doubt that she could do this to the police officers. But you know, it's not like she's paying their bills or anything. So I don't know why they feel like they owe her this level of loyalty. Yeah, the FBI is still coming for you, Super Stupid. They're coming, they are coming. Alright, let's get to this. I just wanna also, just a point of note. Um, there are times where I personally, I'm not big on doing videos where I have to edit them. I don't like doing that. I like to be able to give commentary in real time. I like to be able to kind of just freelance with my videos. I'm not a journalist per se. I, I will go after, you know, the truth and do some sort of investigatory work on Ponzi schemes and things of that nature. But for the most part, situations like this, I like to be able to just speak freely about the situation. So I don't edit my videos. So if you guys hear me drinking or eating, it's because I'm a human being and not a robot. It's not to be weird or to turn off anyone. It's just what it is. I mean, when you give a commentary, you get thirsty. So there are a lot of people who do their content, you know, full time. I still have a regular job. Um, but they have time to edit and do all those things. I don't and I, I don't like doing that. I've, I've had, you know, I've been blessed to have this channel for, you know, almost two years, I think. And with the fantastic supporters that I have, they, they all know I don't like editing. But I don't like editing videos because I want it to be raw and real and authentic and genuine. I want to be able to have conversations with you all in these videos as if I'm standing right next to you. My behavior and the things that I do, if I'm sitting next to you and I get thirsty, I'm gonna pick up a cup and drink something. But it's not to be off putty. And I'm certainly not one to just speak and say things for any money because people obviously could just go on my YouTube analytics page and see how much money my videos make. So just as an FYI, people continue to make an assumption where you could just read the information for yourself. And I have a lot of commentators that put comments on my videos about that. I'm not doing this to make money. How much money you think I'm making here? I wouldn't even have a regular job if I was making that type of money. But if you always want to know how much my videos are earning, uh, it's public information. You could go on my YouTube page, go on the analytics and you could see what my videos are earning for revenue. And it's not a whole lot because a lot of views that I get aren't even for this type of content. It's for my music reactions. So no, I, I don't know why people think that's how it works. And you can see what the revenue is actually being generated on the analytics page. You can see how much money that Google or YouTube was paying anybody for this stuff. I don't, I haven't gotten a royalty check in, I don't know how long. I haven't even met the threshold. You gotta make at least a hundred dollars, I think. But this is information that you guys can just look up. So it's not like it's something proprietary. You can just go on YouTube and look it up. I promise you, it's not a secret. But no, there's not a whole lot of money being made. That's just not how it works, alright? So I always implore and challenge people to, to do that. I don't say things just to be evil of it. I, I want the FBI to arrest her, uh, Super Stupid in, in a meeting, in the middle of a meeting, while the media is there recording it all. And I hope the FBI is wearing their body cameras. Does FBI work that way typically? They don't. They like to take the element of surprise to a whole new level. Lot of times you hear about them doing things in the middle of the night. If they do something in the middle of the day, it's obviously just because they've already had the opportunity to reach out to the uh, person that they're gonna like when they did the raid with P. Diddy. Please understand that man knew that that raid was gonna happen in broad daylight at two different locations. So people can't, you can't think that the FBI is supposed to act or govern themselves in a certain way with a federal investigation. They don't move the way we think they should. They're not gonna just put out information regarding an open investigation. They don't do that. They never have and I don't want them to do that because I don't want that element of surprise to be taken away. And then you're giving the defendant the leverage and the latitude. You're giving them a heads up on everything. If they're doing things in earnest and genuinely, they wouldn't need a heads up. A subpoena should be able to be served or a raid can be done. And if you're not hiding anything, it shouldn't matter. But they, they don't operate, they never have. The FBI doesn't operate and move the way that we think they should. Alright, so let the federal investigation continue to go on. Because what I don't want is this investigation gets rushed and then it gets to a prosecutor. Charges get filed, then we have an indictment and then at the end of the day, you get a hung jury. Or something happens from a technical stance and then there's an appeal and Super Stupid still gets away with it all. You want it to be done right so that it sticks and lands when it does. Alright, I don't want this woman to ever have to appeal anything. I want it to be such a slam dunk, open and shut case when she finally do get criminal charges filed against her. That would, it would be laughable if she thought about an appeal. Would she have the right to it? Yes, but I want it denied. And I want enough evidence and facts of the case to be presented to where no judge would ever think to entertain her buffoonery. And that any appeal she files should be denied because everything was done right the first time around. And that's what you want. Alright, so that's enough of my two cents on that. Let's go.
Isn't as chaotic as the Dalton Board Meeting. Let's get into that meeting right now. Now you can see what happens in the first minute to know that the band is back together and they're going to play the hits.
And then also I see the board of trustees have swipe seats, uh, trustee voucher.
Swipe, swipe.
And what is it, a reason you guys switch seats?
Do they have to have one? Swipe seats is swapped, swapped, Super Stupid. The word is swapped. S W A P P E D, swapped. She still doesn't want to master the English language.
Do it have to be a reason, please?
Nope.
Just ask the question. Everything, I'll be so hostile. Is her?
Oh girl, shut up. Uh, you know what? I, I'm telling you all right now, it irks me to even have to listen to this woman speak at this point. I have not seen this video, so it's gonna be my first time watching it. So my reaction is gonna be real and raw right now. It's real and raw. Then, but no, there doesn't need to be a reason and that's a stupid question to ask. Can you please keep living and move on?
Reason you guys switch seats?
Nope.
Alright, um, it seems as though you want to go first because you gotta keep up with the votes. I think reading probably just couldn't keep up with them. But okay.
So we have the angry residents.
My property tax is down because of the fact of this. But my property tax go up three times, I'm not accepting that.
We have a corrupt mayor and um, somebody that's just so evil and that just don't care about the residents.
You basically let the vendors just unleash their, their war on, on the trustees for asking questions. As a matter of fact, Dalton is at least thirteen million in debt from the lawsuit. The thirty-three and a half million dollar law.
And there's gonna be one coming from the union for the fire department. Woo, and that's about to be a beast. Come on now, you think these people gonna let her get away with not paying their premiums and taking care of their pension and health insurance? Nope, nope. A must and must, a lesson must be taught in that. And it must be taught through a lawsuit. Their lawsuit is gonna be a beast. So if all they're in is thirteen million with the lawsuits plus the seven million from just her stealing money and doing all this all crazy crap? That all these, uh, not allegations, investigations is gonna definitely uncover. Because let me tell you right now, uh, homeboy up there, Keith, yeah, no, he, he has already flipped. You think he wants to go to prison for her? And he's sitting right next to her, that's so funny to me. You, this man is sitting right next to her. He could literally be wearing a wire or something, take a picture of everything. Let me not put everything out there because I really want him to be able to continue to do that if he is. But no, that, that, that thirteen million is about to get higher. What did the fire, the fire department decide to file lawsuit? What did they do that? That's gonna be epic. Yeah, yeah, I heard my phone ringing. I told you I was multitasking. Alright, but yeah, no, that, that, that debt ceiling is about to skyrocket to East Jesus once uh, the fire department put in their lawsuit because they, they need to file a lawsuit. They're gonna have to do that. Uh, I don't know if there's any other recourse for that. And you're talking about claims being denied, which means that you have firefighters that are gonna want reimbursement because the city didn't pay for their premiums. And because they demanded, you know, the financials to see what was going on and they never got it. The city should be, you know, the Super Stupid should be held accountable for it. And she's the one that's sitting here withholding information and no one else is doing it for her. So they're gonna have to file a lawsuit against her. They're gonna have to. Don't sit here and put her feelings before you all's finances and your families and homes you gotta take care of. Sue her ass and be done with it and sleep peacefully.
Suit that Lacy and Perez were involved in.
We have the sniping back and forth between the mayor and the trustees.
You take certain people out, that's called targeting. And I get it because you guys want to control the narrative of everything, but you're the one creating all the chaos and all the misunderstanding.
That's your job.
But yeah, oh, it's my job, okay. It's my job, go get the money. But yeah, y'all want to tell me what to do. It don't work like that.
That's our job. No, we didn't tell you what to do. Yes, we do.
And we got the Mr. Dot guy back to help Tiffany Henyard.
I'm telling you, did nobody ever tell her the definition of public servant? So no one has told you the definition of or the concept of a public servant? Hell, for you were elected. That means that you're there at the will of the people. Some of them probably didn't vote for you. But yet and still they all want you gone and you keep forcing yourself on people. And then you think somebody can't tell you what to do? I mean, the fact that you're, you're just too stupid to understand the concept of three branches of government in and of itself blows my mind. But for you to sit up there and to say something so cocky and arrogant and demeaning while you still forget your place, which is you being a mayor. You still have the judicial and the legislative branches that have equal power to you and you do not get to control them. No, you do not. And the will of the people that are out there in the audience, yes, they do get to tell you what to do. So you could go sip your brainless, moronic goon ass down somewhere or step down and give these people the relief that they need, which is you gone and wait till the FBI come kicking in your damn door. The hell you, this shit's saying, hey, you don't get to tell me what? Yes, they do. Because we have a whole constitution that says that that legislative body gets to tell you what to do. Yes, they do. Yes, they do. You need to go read a book or read something. Yes ma'am, they do. They get to tell you what to do every step of the way. And then when you don't want to agree with it, it's called a veto or an override. So yes, they do. They get to tell you what to do all day, every day.
I just wanted to say, uh, I.
Okay guys, you have to keep order.
Instead of having a deputy police chief, Mr. Clear the Room Lacy, we have a literal superhuman named Terry Young that worked three hundred and three hours over a two week period. That's like working about twenty-one hours a day. He's basically biotic or something. Officer Young, instead of saying clear the room, he likes to say shh.
Chooses not to say certain people. You take certain people out, that's called targeting. And I get it because you guys want to talk about whatever you feel you don't like, don't understand.
Instead of saying one more outburst, he likes to shush people. Then we have some residents talking about bringing peace and everyone needs to calm down. We all need to work together.
We don't have any peace in our heart. And I know you guys are angry and there's issues to be solved, but check this out. Why don't we all try to work together and solve this? Trustees, mayor, residents, all of us.
Spoiler alert, that did not happen in this meeting. But let's continue. One of the most important parts of this meeting, to me, I believe the true highlight of the meeting was the arrival of the fire department. It was a powerful statement read by Adam.
Watcha, let me tell y'all something. This show of strength right here, let me help y'all understand. This is, this is what I want to see. This is it. And honestly, let's, let's be clear on this. People like this lady here is why Super Stupid Mayor is in the position she's in. Because you're trying to overlook all of the fallacies and defaults that she herself have brought on this. She caused most of this on her own shy of he who will not be named in the Lady Luck Club. Doing what he did to that lady that she had terminated to try to cover his criminal behavior and disgusting behavior. How can you work together with that? You're not even giving them accountability when you say, we just need to work together and get over it. And then that's it. She's not trying to work together. She's not trying to work with anybody. You have to understand sometimes people are gonna show you who they are. Believe them. And then believe them where they are. I, I don't understand why, why you need to go around someone. Expecting the wrong people to do the right thing is a flawed concept. It is stupid. It is the epitome of stupidity. Expecting a different result, doing the same thing over and over and over, expecting a different result. You're expecting someone who is incapable of even thinking morally, let alone doing the right thing. You expect the wrong person to come together to try to fix something. She's not a fixer. She is the problem. And if you don't want to believe me, read case law. Go, go read some of them lawsuits. See, when I make my statements about this hell for, I don't sit here and just make it out there just to be appeasing and funny and entertaining. No, 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 I, I understand the power of reading depositions. These case filings from those lawsuits where they have facts stated in those lawsuits, evidence and exhibits to support that. This isn't someone that just needs a timeout. This is someone that needs prison time. And you're talking about someone that is under FBI investigation to try to do something right. What, why? Why are you expecting that? You're bringing more disappointment unnecessarily. It's a disservice, it's dis, it's a, it's a, it's disingenuous. It's a disservice. And at the end of the day, the FBI would not be investigating, Super Stupid, if she did not give them cause to do it. In order for them to get a warrant or to get a, 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 a search warrant to be executed, that has to be signed as an order from a judge, from a court of law. There is a court with a judge that signed a warrant for the FBI to execute that search warrant in that raid. That came from the courthouse. You really think that they just showed up there with a piece of paper? No, that's not how it works. This is why I keep saying that we have three separate but co-equal branches of government. You have the FBI, the Federal Bureau of Investigations, that are tasked with doing federal investigations with jurisdiction on a national level. Doesn't matter what state she tries to flee to, they will go to that state and extradite her back to where she belong and have her answer to criminal charges if she thinks about fleeing. But they have the authority to seek a warrant and that has to be signed by a judge. And they have to have sufficient evidence to validate that search warrant. So when people keep saying, well, we don't have any evidence. Read the case filings. Read the search warrant, read this information that is out there available to the public. You're not gonna get case details from the FBI. They're not gonna put out details of their investigation because they don't move that way. But whatever has been sent to the court, anything that goes on in the court of law is available to the public unless the case is sealed or information is redacted or suppressed. You can do a FOIA request to get these court filings for those civil proceedings, those lawsuits and stuff. They have to have evidence with those cases as well. It can't just be purely based on someone's allegation. You gotta have a burden of proof met in those civil proceedings and it's a preponderance of evidence. You still gotta have evidence. Read those case documents in court. That should give you enough to understand from a legal perspective what's going on and why I say the things that I say about Super Stupid. The problem is that she's not even smart enough to know how to stop. So we're gonna let this dummy continue to bury herself in that hole, one of which only the FBI will be fishing her behind out of when they decide to lock her ass up. But to sit here and to say, oh, we don't have evidence. You're not looking for it. You just need to go do a FOIA request to the court. Go to the courthouse. Go read those court documents for those lawsuits and stuff. They have to have evidence and exhibits with them. There's a process called discovery. There are a lot of information that you can't read of what's available in the courts so that you can have an understanding of why Lady Luck Club keeps calling this Tiffany Henyard, Super Stupid. Plus I have zero respect for her and I owe her nothing. She does not pay my bills. She doesn't have to take care of my kids. She's a complete embarrassment to hers and I don't, I don't owe her anything. So no, I have zero respect for that hell. None, none, none. And I'm not in Dalton. I mean, honestly, I, I do this because I, I think it's important to keep the information out there because embarrassment is the greatest teacher of all. So a narcissist and that piece of arrogant crap like Super Stupid needs to be embarrassed every second of her day. And it's the only way you're gonna really get her attention. Keep embarrassing the hell out of her. Reporting on her and having that go to social media and to the news and all of that, that, that's the, that's the best lesson that she's learning is, is, is showing her herself. She's embarrassed and no one cares. No one owes her anything. Understand this is who she is. We don't need to sit here and expect her to cooperate. No one needs to expect the wrong people to do the right thing. It doesn't make sense to have this complacent mindset and nothing's going to get done if you have some, some expectation of Super Stupid helping you to do something right when she is the wrong individual to even have that expectation in to begin with. So stop it. You know, I'm glad people like this did not sit back and try to convince Dr. Martin Luther King that civil rights movement was not necessary. We just need to see how to get along with everybody. No, we need to go to White House and get a Voting Rights Act and some anti-discrimination laws passed. What are you talking about?
Spoiler alert, that did not happen in this meeting. But let's continue.
It's not gonna happen at all with her.
One of the most important parts of this meeting, to me, I believe the true highlight of the meeting was the arrival of the fire department. It was a powerful statement read by Adam, the new president of Local 3766. And it really struck hard with a lot of people that were in that room. This man is standing up for his team, the firefighters who put their lives on line every day to protect the people of Dalton. Shout out to anyone that decides to be a firefighter. You're basically are risking your life. You go into the building while people are trying to run out that building. And it's shocking and disturbing to hear what they're going through. First of all, let's talk about the sheer disrespect the firefighters have faced.
Hey, with fellow members of 3766 looking for answers. Since January of 2020, the village has chose not to settle a contract and refused to bargain with us. They have ignored all requests to reach an agreement and resolve the current situation going on within the fire department. After endorsing Mayor Henyard in 2021, she proceeded to replace our full-time deputy chief with a part-time deputy chief who contributed to her campaign fund. This was, this is where the problems began. Local 3766 filed and won the grievance on a clear violation of our contract. What followed was a dysfunctional negotiation process, which led us, which leads us to inform the residents that we've been serving the village without a contract for five years. Currently, the village still refuses to negotiate, making progress extremely difficult and if not impossible. The second issue is our 457 accounts, which have been in litigation since 2022. This account is set up for individuals to invest their own money into a retirement fund. The money is withdrawn from the member's paychecks and is supposed to be sent to Nationwide. The village does not follow these steps and has no accountability of where the money is or if they've spent it. Once this was discovered, the administration was informed via email by the previous union president that these missing deposits can be considered theft of wages. They replied, they reacted by placing him on administrative leave for inappropriate emails. To this date, we are still nine to 10 to.
They put him on administrative leave for inappropriate emails. So I would like to ask that grandmother that's sitting here talking about some, um, we all need to get along. How do you get along with that? That is unlawful because that money does come out of their paycheck. It is considered wages and it is theft of wages to say that we're gonna take this money out your check to go towards Nationwide Insurance. And they don't do that. That means they not only failed to ensure some sort of contract to be held legally accountable for this, but they're just taking money and they're not telling them where their own money, their own wages is going. How would that village feel not having firefighters? I mean, that's my question. Where, where, where would the grandmother be at when she needs the firefighters to come to her aid and help her? And they all on strike. They're what? You gonna blame the firefighters for choosing to not want to work for free after being abused for five years and, and basically working for five years without a contract, not ever knowing if their wages that's being taken from them is actually going to the security of an insurance plan and pension plan for them? How do you get along with that? Break it down and explain it to me. We can't continue to be ignorant to this stuff and pretend like, oh, this is solvable. No, nope. What I told you all in, in my last two videos I did on Super Stupid, specifically with the firefighters, I said they are going to have to file a lawsuit against Super Stupid. They're going to have to do it. That's not something you sit down and talk with her to work things out on. They're going to have to sue her. And if any of you watch a deposition that she's done, what she owed a law firm over six figures, you will see why I'm telling you she's not the type of person just based on these town hall meetings and her behavior in, in, in the public eye is enough to show that she is incapable of working with anyone at this point. She's a self, selfish narcissistic arrogant thump head with no brain and soul that only cares about herself. What, what is there to work with? I don't even expect someone like her to tell the truth at this point because she literally wants people to believe some alternate reality where her mind is stuck in, where rules, laws, case law, court rules, documents, the evidence aren't real terms. I mean, those are foreign concepts to her. Being moral and ethical, that, that's not something she understands. And at this point, no one should be trying to force her to understand it. She'll get it when she stands before a judge and realize she's not gonna have a defense for the many, many criminal charges that's gonna come out of the FBI investigation. These lawsuits ensures that you all get what you deserve and what she has taken from you by force. No one has the right to steal someone else's wages. How do you work with that? Meanwhile, where's the grandma at?
As it's short, this shows lack of accountability and is an act of gross. It's short. This shows lack of accountability and is an act of gross negligence. The third issue, health insurance. Health insurance is covered under the collective bargaining agreement, Article fourteen. Members of the fire department have run into several problems with our premiums not being met. This has led members and families' claims being denied, but also being sent to collections. This has been brought up to the village numerous times. All requests to date have been ignored. Agreements was filed and escalated to step four. The fourth issue is our union dues. Per our collective bargaining agreement, Article three, dues checks. The village is responsible for contributing union dues. We were missing eleven checks since twenty twenty-three. Six hundred and ten dollars. We received three unspecified checks. This can also be looked at uh, as theft of wages.
What the heck is, Jesus? Didn't I tell y'all they're gonna have to sue them? Didn't I tell y'all the fire department is gonna have to sue her? Oh my God, see, this is, uh, this is the reaction you get out of me when I haven't seen the video beforehand. And I'm, I'm just seeing this for the first time. I am. I've been buried in work. Oh my good Lord. They're gonna have to file a lawsuit against her.
This was, this is an issue on the trustees. And has no accountability of where the money is or if they've spent it. Once this was discovered, the administration was informed via email by the previous union president that these missing deposits can be considered theft of wages. They replay, they reacted by placing him on administrative leave for inappropriate emails. To this date, we are still nine to ten deposits short. This shows lack of accountability and is an act of gross negligence. The third issue, health insurance. Health insurance is covered under the collective bargaining agreement, Article fourteen. Members of the fire department have run into several problems with our premiums not being met. This has led members and families' claims being denied, but also being sent to collections. This has been brought up to the village numerous times. All requests to date have been ignored. Agreements was filed and escalated to step four. The fourth issue is our union dues. Per our collective bargaining agreement, Article three, dues checks.
In collections, that means that they're paying money out of pocket and when they can't afford it, it go to collections which will mess up their credit. Do you know, this is, didn't I tell you all? Didn't I tell you all that lawsuit coming from the fire department will do a whole lot of damage? Didn't I tell y'all? I, I can't make this up, bro. You can't make this up. How do you get along with it? This is ridiculous. Didn't I tell you all? I said the firefighters, I got to be bold and brave. You're gonna have to sue her. And that lawsuit is gonna do some damage. I said at the beginning of this video. Man, now you all hear what he's saying and you see why. Their, their lawsuit is going to do so much damage to her financially. It's not gonna be funny. They're gonna have to sue her and you all need to sue her. The retaliation alone, that's a lawsuit. Theft of wages, people in collections having their credit destroyed, collections. Man, they're gonna have to sue her. They're gonna have to sue her. File a lawsuit.
Twelve thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. We received The second issue is our four fifty-seven accounts, which have been in litigation since twenty twenty-two. This account is set up for individuals to invest their own money into a retirement fund. The money is withdrawn from the members' paychecks and is supposed to be sent to Nationwide. The village does not follow these steps and has no accountability of where the money is or if they've spent it. Once this was discovered, the administration was informed via email by the previous union president that these missing deposits can be considered theft of wages. They reacted by placing him on administrative leave for inappropriate emails. To this date, we are still nine to ten deposits short. This shows lack of accountability and is an act of gross negligence. The third issue, health insurance. Health insurance is covered under the collective bargaining agreement, Article fourteen. The members of the fire department have run into several problems with our premiums not being met. This has led members and families' claims being denied, but also being sent to collections. This has been brought up to the village numerous times. Agreements was filed and escalated to step four. The fourth issue is our union dues. Per our collective bargaining agreement, Article three, dues checks. The village is responsible for contributing union dues. We were missing eleven checks since twenty twenty-three. Six hundred and ten dollars. We received three unspecified.
Yeah, these people are, they already have people going to collections and now they're missing money that is supposed to be part of union dues. Are you serious? Didn't I tell you all to question them checks coming from super stupid? Okay, listen to this.
Satisfied checks. This can also be looked at uh, as theft of wages. Filed and escalated to step four. The fourth issue is our union dues. Per our collective bargaining agreement, Article three, dues checks. The village is responsible for contributing union dues. We were missing eleven checks since twenty twenty-three. Twelve thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. We received three unspecified checks. This can also be looked at.
Three unspecified checks. Didn't I tell y'all to question if you get a check? Didn't I say that in my last video? Y'all might wanna question them checks. Like, hold on, I was like, the hell happened here with this check coming here? I need to call the FBI. I'll call you back. Didn't I tell y'all that in my last video? Question those checks. Three unspecified checks. Didn't I tell you all? I said it, I said it because I know what I'm talking about. When you read court filings and you understand why certain things like that should be questioned. Three unspecified checks. So at the end of the day, even if you get a check, you need to question where is this coming from? What is this about? Because this idiot is under FBI investigation and I wouldn't trust anything coming from her. I told you, I said they're gonna have to, y'all need to start looking at them checks you getting. This lawsuit from the fire department is going to be epic. You have everything in this. You got retaliation, you got collect money unpaid going into collection. That means that credits are being destroyed. You got unpaid dues with union fees. You have insurance claims not being processed. That means people are having to pay stuff out of pocket that they can't afford. Oh, the failure to get a contract in place. Why, why would you want to piss off a union? How do you work with that, P- meanwhile granny? How, how, how was somebody supposed to be able to work together with that nonsense now? Please explain to me. Don't explain it because you can't. Ah, oh my good Lord.
Uh, as theft of wages. The step three process was, this is an issue on the trustees that they do not vote for the bills at, uh, from the warrant list. The newest issue is work comp. In the past, we've had multiple issues with work comp to where members have been hurt on the line of duty and their claims have not been filed properly, which led to multiple members being sent to collections. I know that the police, the police department.
Oh my God, oh my God, did you all hear that? Workers' comp not being paid out. And those, that the fees of the, the money that these firefighters owe for medical expenses, anything else going to collections. How can you possibly survive? When it seems like your burden and, and your expenses are greatly outweighing your revenue, plus you have theft of wages. That's not a mere accusation. They have evidence to support that. There are times in court where it, it's sometimes even with without evidence, certain things that are just so true that you don't even need evidence to support it and they just kinda call it circumstantial. Where it's if money is missing from your account, doesn't matter who's stealing it, doesn't matter where it's going. Just the fact that it's missing and unexplained can be considered theft of wages by definition and in context. That is something that most people can agree on to be a truthful statement, which means that they went to court. It said that we have a, a situation where many firefighters are experiencing, experiencing a theft of wages. Because the money is coming out of their paycheck, their wages. That is missing and unexplained. Here are all the responses that we're getting from goon after goon after goon that kisses super stupid's ass. And they can't tell us where the money has gone. They will not produce financial disclosure. They won't adhere to foyer requests. They don't have a contract. Our claims are being denied. It would be an undeniable matter of a fact. And the court would say we believe that this is a proven theft of wages. Based on the evidence they do have and just the definition, the concept of it. It would be indisputable in court in a civil proceeding. I really hope they link up with some government like content. Let me see, I'm gonna try to find a government agency that they can report this to that could file a federal lawsuit on their behalf as well, um. Huh, the fire department. I'm gonna look up a government agency. Because it, it, it would be, oh man, it would be a slam dunk if it's a federal lawsuit. But it would, it would have to come, I think it would have to come from a, a federal, uh, or government agency. For it to be a federal lawsuit, it has to come from a federal agency, I think. I'm gonna look one up. Maybe the, the, um, is there a firefighter's commission? I'm gonna look it up. Alright, I'm gonna look it up.
Dealing with similar issues. So my question is, do we have workman's comp insurance? The Dalton Fire Department is here to serve and protect the residents of the Village of Dalton and we do this with pride. We will continue to serve despite the fact our health insurance is not being paid, our retirement funds are being taken from us and workers' compensation claims are not being handled properly. These are serious issues and they need to be addressed and fixed immediately.
So since January twenty twenty, the village has
Oh my God, y'all gonna have to file a lawsuit. Y'all gonna have to file a lawsuit. Let me find the agency. Alright, now I'm, I'm gonna let Hannibal talk.
Flat out refusing to negotiate with them. So imagine going to work every day, risking your life and not being able to have a contractor protect you because the village officials won't come to the table. That's completely outrageous. Then is the issue with Mayor Hanyard. Back in twenty twenty-one, the fire department endorsed her, probably hoping for some positive changes. But what did they get in return? She replaced their full-time deputy chief with a part-time deputy who just happened to be the one that contributes to her campaign. That sounds like pay for play. That's a huge red flag. It's one thing to play politics. Compromises the leadership of a fire department, it's a big problem. Fought back and won a grievance on this matter, which is great, but it seems like there's one battle after another. The village dysfunctional negotiation process had left the fighter fighters without a contract for five years. That's five years of uncertainty and instability. This isn't just a clerical error. It's a potential theft of wages. Imagine working hard, putting money away for future and then finding out that it's not there. And then the village reaction, they put the previous union president on administrative leave for calling them out. Basically shooting the messenger. So there's other issues. Health insurance. Their claims are being denied. We talked about this in the last video as well. And then also the union dues. The village hasn't been following the collective bargaining agreement, leaving union dues unpaid and unaccounted for. Workers' comp is, that's another disaster. Firefighters injured on the job may have their claims mishandled, leading to more collection issues.
Okay, I got it. I got it. Here's a suggestion to the fire department. You all can file an official complaint with the Office of Commissioner of Insurance and Safety Fire. Okay. There are a government agency that can file a federal lawsuit on you all's behalf against Tiffany Henyard. Because what you wanna do is ensure this matter is not only heard in court. She won't have a choice. If you get a federal court and a federal judge to issue a order and a ruling on the relief that you all are seeking. And if, even if they have to set up a, um, um, a, a fair fund or disgorgement. That, that would be a lot, it would just be an easier process. I'm not saying it can't be done. It would just be an easier process if it's through a federal lawsuit. I, y'all need to get a federal lawsuit. Please contact the, um, uh, Commissioner of Insurance and Safety Fire for the state of Illinois. And, because every state have their own, like, that's a federal government agency, like, on a higher level. The, uh, Commissioner of Insurance and Safety Fire, but every state has its own little branch, considered just a, a state-level office, so to speak. Still a government agency. But there's one in every state. So you guys go to the Illinois State Commissioner of Insurance and Safety Fire. Say, hey, we've had insurance fraud with theft of wages. We don't have, you know, we're a, a union, we don't have a, a, a contract in place. They're not honoring, honoring the collective bargaining agreements. So we, we have a whole lot of fraud here, the, the workers' comp and health insurance are not being paid at all. That's fraud. And then we have claims that are not being paid and go into collections. People are suffering for this. You're gonna have to, and it's, it's not trying to penalize Nationwide, but Nationwide can also file a complaint against Tiffany Henyard. From their end. It's putting Nationwide in a vicarious predicament here. So it will behoove them to support the firefighters to say, yeah, no, that, y'all need to sue the hell out of her. Because we, we can only do so much, but we support firefighters with filing a federal lawsuit. You're gonna have to go to your commission and I'm gonna find another one. I'm gonna find another one. Because I know there has to be another one. I'm, I'm gonna find another one to actually just represent the firefighters uh, agency, because I'm, I'm not a firefighter, so I have to look this stuff up. But I'm gonna find another one where they could go through it and help push along a federal lawsuit. Because I'm telling you all, this lawsuit would be epic. If they were to file this lawsuit with these allegations and, and honestly, the, the theft of wages, I mean, there's a clear theft of wages. It's just a matter of where the money's going and who's stealing it and what's going on with it. But it's clearly a, a theft of wages in, in general. Because they have wages coming out of the check going somewhere into the atmosphere that belongs to them that they earned. So you violating, now you're violating labor laws, federal labor laws. Because your wages are being stolen. There you go. So now you can go to the Department of Labor and the Department of Revenue and say, listen, we got theft of wages happening here. And they won't tell us what they're taking our money that we've earned. So they need to compensate us back and give us our wages back. Plus, any restitution payments, any reimbursements, anything that you could get from those federal lawsuits. Now you see, now, see, I just need to look this stuff up and think for two seconds. So now you could go to the Department of Labor, the Department of Revenue, the Office of Commissioner of Insurance and Safety Fire. And that's three agencies that you can file these complaints with and urge them to do federal lawsuits for you all. And then if, you know, if you wanna do a backup measure, you all can file a lawsuit. The government could still file a lawsuit as well. They can file a lawsuit as well. They can do a federal lawsuit on you all's behalf and you guys could still file a lawsuit on your, um, you know, with the, uh, as a civil proceeding in court. But man, a federal lawsuit would just literally slam dunk that one. It really would. Now you got theft of wages. So that's Department of Labor, the, uh, Office, uh, the Commissioner of Insurance and Safety Fire. And then you have the Department of Revenue that can get involved to figure out where that money is going because it is considered wages. Man, yeah, there you go. Please, please, please reach out to those government agencies and, and get something going with that. With those lawsuits. Y'all got to sue her.
Is a big problem. So I hope they can figure something out. One thing about the firefighters and it was probably two seconds. I'll show it right now.
It's all about a show for everybody now. And that's what's so sad. Try to lie to the public about whatever's going on. Just like how y'all talking about the firemen and they came up. Of course, you know, I'm gonna get to the bottom of whatever it is. I'm gonna do a whole video about it. Because just for somebody.
No, I'm gonna do a whole video about it. You gonna catch a whole lawsuit about it. I, I don't even know why I'm like shocked at what she's saying. Nope. You guys are gonna have to file a lawsuit against her incompetent ass. File a lawsuit. And report her to the Department of Labor and the Commissioner of the Insurance and Safety Fire. That way you got two government agencies that can also go after her and file a federal lawsuits against her. So we could just shut her up and all that and sit her down somewhere. Because at this point, there's nothing to rectify and get to the bottom of. They literally said they had three unspecified checks. Which is why they need to involve the Department of Revenue. Where, where are these checks coming from? What, 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 where are those checks, unspecified checks? For what? Where is it coming from? So now you gotta get Department of Revenue involved. Because you're getting money from somewhere as a, a, a union. And you're the fire department. So you gotta report this because you know, who, who, what the hell is that? You don't know if you cast some checks, somebody come knocking on your door, talking about, now you owe me two arms and a leg. Like seriously. I wouldn't trust nothing come from Manhattan. Nope. I'd rather, I'd rather sue you. And then when we win, you pay our attorney fees, court fees and back pay and everything else. And it'd be greater than them unspecified checks. our attorney fees, court fees, and back pay and everything else, and it'd be greater than them unspecified checks that y'all sitting here wondering where it's coming from, where this money coming from. You yeah, you can definitely get the payoff in in the backend where you get a lawsuit and you gonna have a, it it's not gonna be hard to even prove it. The fact that she doesn't have evidence to support anything that's nonsense she's saying, it's ended up as so problematic, you can't take that to court. The judges know that's not a defense, this crap she talking about is showboat and grandstanding, yeah, good luck saying that crap in court in front of a judge. Your attorney will not allow you to speak if that's what you gonna say. They gonna be like, can you shut your ass up? That's exactly what they gonna say, no, they gonna say, shut your black ass up, cause you love reminding people that you black. Y'all gonna have to sue her, this is it, sewer.
Somebody say something, don't make it true, don't make it factual till you fact check it.
Before we get into Tiffany Hingard's long line of nonsense that she likes to spit at every meeting, let's talk about House and his address on Lightfoot and the investigation progress. So, House updated residents about the status of the Open Meeting Act violations.
For the residents, we do hear your con- your statements about of the original meeting that the restrictions uh occurred with metal detectors, limited seating. The board decided that we felt that it was improper and we adjourned that meeting accordingly. Following that meeting, we've made two outreaches in April as well as in May through our attorneys to the Attorney General's Office. Uh, we had not gotten immediate response, however, thankfully.
Where the hell is the Attorney General and the District Attorney at? Where y'all State AG at? Or the DA, wh- where are they? Okay, I don't know, what, stop expecting them to respond, because they don't care. Clearly, they don't care. You got the governor saying nonsense about, oh, I'm not trying to override one investigation over the other. Um, one is a criminal investigation from the FBI, the other is a civil matter from Lori Lightfoot, what the heck are you talking about? Nobody checked him in real time on that, that's not how that works, Governor, no sir. You're talking about them overlapping, a civil and a criminal matter overlapping like that, the way you think they gonna be running over each other? That, one is criminal, one is civil, what are you talking about?
Be with um, a got with assistance and persistence through residents as well. Uh, Mr. Dan Lee amongst other residents who have joined in the writing, we we we've been able to receive
The DA don't care.
A response from the Attorney General's Office on June tenth. They responded, saying that the matter does determine further investigation and seeks and seek uh response from the administration. That was June tenth, that was the original letter came. June twenty eighth, last Friday, apparently no response has been given. So a second request has been issued, and that second request um is say is essentially saying that if there, if we do not get a response, they have no choice but to deem this an Open Meetings Act violation.
House also reads an email update from Lori Lightfoot, also House.
Would it be hard for him to say that now? How many more cases do they need to say is proof that they have violated the open meetings, they violated so many Open Records Act, Open Meetings Act. All the violations, the larger list of violations, theft of wages, I mean, failure to get a contract with the fire department. Failure to adhere to the collective bargaining agreement, how many more violations do we, do they need to bring up? Before the AG decides to do something, anything at all? I I don't understand it, I I really hope that FBI investigation shed some light on this AG and the DA that sit here and decide to remain complicit of this nonsense and buffoonery. That they should be utterly embarrassed by, not sitting here and and trying to shy away from. Super Stupid is one person. The AG has more power than her, what the hell is going on? You have more power than Tiffany Hingard. So why aren't you doing more? You have more power.
Read a le- letter from the Attorney General, which concluded that the board did not violate the Open Meeting Act by appointing Lori Lightfoot as a special investigator.
So we do have an update, or I have a update email that was received from uh from the investigation on former Mayor, Mayor Lightfoot. Uh, has emailed a response that I want to read into record, so that way hopefully this will be much more peaceful. So, uh, her statement, we are making consistent progress in addressing the questions the board has asked us to address in its resolution. We have conducted a number of witness interviews, many of which have been very informative and have led to discovery of other relevant evidence. We have reviewed many lawsuits filed, we have reviewed historic village legislative action and and we have issued scores of FOIA requests to the village of Dalton and elsewhere. As a result of this work, a picture is emerging of the village's finances, the way, the way in which it current, the current executive administration operates, many issues with the police department regarding staffing and operations, and overall how the village for, how the village form of government does or does not comply with state law.
They never have.
Ordinances and longstanding norms regarding the village government. Not surprisingly, there have been obstacles. Chief among them is the vil- is the village continues to ignore its obligations under FOIA. There is seemingly no identifiable FOIA officer as mandated by state law. Instead, the few communications, if any, are with any anonymous person who refused.
Okay, so they violating state statutes, and yet the governor uh and the State AG are taking their damn time to do something when there is a clear violation of state statutes. They literally act as if she is the dictator of the state of Illinois. Can you all grow a backbone in this, in the AG's office or the DA's office and the governor's office and do something? You know how many acts that the legislative branch of government in the state of Illinois could pass right now to put a lockdown on her? Seriously. At literally the governor could just have her sat down and removed, I don't even know why he's just torturing these poor people with this, I think he gonna get re-elected.
Just to be identified themselves, again, a violation of state law among many issues. This non-compliance with FOIA was expected, and we have a plan to address this and any continuing compliance issue.
Of course, I even said that.
And while mi- and while many witnesses have been generous in their willingness to be interviewed, the 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 village mayor's failure to cooperate has a chilling effect on the current employees' willingness to speak or otherwise cooperate. We will continue to work to overcome this problem. While we have made consistent progress, more work needs to be done. We have been very efficient to date in the expenses incurred, and by our estimates, we are well under twenty thousand dollars to date. As obligated, we will provide a projection of all costs when we get closer to the thirty thousand dollar mark. And as always, we will continue to do our work in a manner that minimizes expenses while diligently following the facts. So that is the statement for the update on this report.
This, now this says the investigation uncovered numerous issues with the village finances, the police department operations, compliance with state laws and village ordinances. However, the investigation has faced obstacles, the village failure to comply with the FOIA requests. There is no FOIA officer, that's bad, it's not legal. And obviously, the mayor's lack of cooperation, which at this point, why would she cooperate? Lightfoot may be done soon, and I am looking forward to see what she has to say. So Attorney General looks like he's probably done. He probably is wiping his hand or cleaning his hands from the whole Haney situation. I've made videos talking about the connection of Attorney General with the Speaker of the House, with the former attorney Delgado. It's the good old boys' club, they all take care of each other, but it looks like.
But then he doesn't owe her anything. He's the AG, she's a stupid mayor. He literally has more pool than she does, and he has the entire rule of law on his side. What the hell is he scared of from one simpleton mayor? What are you doing, bro? You can't this be, this be this big of a wuss, you're a punk. The AG of Illinois is a punk, what a coward you are. You don't even wanna realize, recognize the power you actually have over a simpleton mayor. You are a coward. You're a coward. And it's disgusting that you still choose to sit in that position, he should be disbarred from being negligent of his duties. This is sheer negligence. His failure to uphold his oath to the law and to the rule of law. To the Constitution, state law, federal laws, are you kidding me? He should be disbarred, I honestly don't see why, why should you still remain in standing with the Illinois State Bar? When you are being completely derelict of your duties. Gross incompetence.
When Haney is just out there embarrassing herself, the protection will eventually leave, and people will probably people have to cover their own asses, and they're not gonna sit there and continue to try to support Mayor Haney. So I think finally Kwame Wawu realizes that the jig is up, he's gonna probably take a step back and let this happen, especially now the FBI is in town. And Haney talking a lot of crap about Lightfoot and the whole thing being illegal, remember her and Keith Price talking about how illegal it was? Well, the Attorney General said it wasn't illegal, so guess we're done with that situation.
I said state side, the state statute of what laws are being violated, you say something is illegal, that means it is a violation of law. Another term that dumb dumb needs to Google on dictionary dot com. State the statute that's being violated here, what law has been broken? You just can't just say things like that and say it's illegal. And then you wanna tell people to look things up for themselves, okay, so when I pull up dictionary dot com, you know, I I I mean, the words are there clearly written. If you know how to read super stupid, you could read definitions of terms for yourself. No one needs to go out and do their research to prove anything to you, you're the one that needs to read. I cannot believe the AG has been this cowardice all this time, what a coward.
But let's get into Mayor Haney's report, it's just a big mix of defensiveness, pride, and then a weird call for unity. Which is really, doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
I am the one that has made it, I am the one that actually grew up in this town and actually came and governed uh where I live at, because I care so much about where I'm at. If you think about all the hatred and all the negativity, I told.
There's nothing negative or hating about the truth. Facts are facts, laws are laws, and none of them cares about your dumb feelings, girl. Facts are facts, laws are laws, and neither of those things care about how the hell you feel. And you're gonna have a rooting awakening of that when you go to court. Prayerfully, the judge will not be biased and will do the right thing and will remain impartial and objective. Because then you'll really learn that laws are laws, facts are facts, and the judge doesn't care about your feelings either. When they're looking at this from an objective stance and they look at the facts of the case and the evidence in the case, they're going to ensure that this is done right. So that you cannot come out talking about, oh, I just didn't get through processing, no, nope. Give her the biggest fair hearing of all, televise it, so everybody can witness it, so that nothing goes unpunished or unseen in 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 some deep secret super scroll meeting, nope, bring everything to the light. Make everything televised, put everything out there on camera. That way she can't keep complaining about the same old thing over and over again, people can see for themselves, and you don't have to worry about something not being fairly done, because it was all done in the open, in the courtroom, on a court of record. And that way we can all see exactly what's happening, since you want people to see the truth. I wanna see, the day you get arrested, I want to see the day you go to court. I want to see the full trial, I want to see all of that. Yes, I do. Put it all out there in the open, since you keep complaining and whining and crying like a woman baby tantrum toddler. Talking about how nothing's fair in life, life isn't fair, but you make it up for yourself. Nope, this isn't hatred, this is not about some evil force and none of that. This is all you're doing, and it's consequences that you're having to bear for your dumbass actions. Pride comes before the fall, and you are surely to fall and fall hard, and I just hope a camera's there to watch it all happen.
You guys put me under, I make fifty K, so that means somebody really gotta love what they do for a living. I love what I do and I wanna see Dalton grow, and I.
What does her tax statement say? I mean, honestly, is she gonna lie against what is reported as wages with the Department of Labor? You know that your income information is public information as a public servant. Or is she not aware of that? Her income is public information. What the hell? Like, okay, alright. Keep on, keep on talking stupid, that way the FBI sees this video and then when that portion of the case comes up to where you're not being deposed by the FBI. Oh, you ain't gonna be able to get in there and say all that old nonsense you said in the other deposition. Nope, they gonna play this video, and they gonna say, is it true that you said that your wages are fifty thousand dollars? Yes, I did, where's the proof of that? You can look it up, we did, here it is, cause your inco- income is is public information. So, we got this from the Department of Labor, Department of Revenue, and the IRS, cause you somehow filed taxes. So we got three pieces of evidence here where you make three, uh six figures. Where where is it that you're only limited to a fifty thousand dollar a year income? Where is that at? Okay, keep on, keep on with this nonsense, you lying hell fuck.
Ground, taking care of the business, from getting streets repaired, getting alleys repaired, getting sidewalks done. Back in the day, we used to do fifty fifty, where the resident had to pay fifty percent and the village paid the other fifty, and they said, why would you guys have to pay fifty percent for something you don't own, that's a public way. But these are the things that I changed when I became the mayor, so I will.
When you pay the player and you're sitting here scheming and scamming up top by giving your uh vendors a overpayment so that you can get a percentage of that, especially with that truck, that I hope they uncover real soon about how much money you really got from that that hundred fifty thousand dollar sale of a stupid Tahoe truck. Yeah, okay. You you you'll say, no, I won't, I don't want them to pay it, but what I do want is ten percent for giving you this contract as a vendor, yep. This is what the FBI is investigating, stuff like that. Let her bury herself. Keep on going to these Tahoe meetings and being the dumb moron that you are. We're all watching.
That people will allow me to lead and stop trying to tell me what to do, I'm the leader, I am not in their seats any longer, I was in their seats for eight years. I win every single term that I run for, every single term. Which is the mayor's seat that I just won by eighty-two percent, um I will win my next term, and uh just stay tuned to that. And try to keep up mess and kick up dust for clickbait, for the news or for just to get a moment and say, hey, girl, I was on the news. That that's so, so beneath us, you have to grow, guys, and you have to show people that you are growing and that we should be looking to you for direction, we can't look to you for direction, cause you're so messy. Um, I just want people to see Dalton for.
Y'all, let the F, let her bury her hole. That only the FBI will be dragging her ass out of. The FBI is watching. They watch all of these videos. Yes, they do. Let her bury herself.
But it is, it's a great place to live, uh all our numbers are coming in really good.
She wants to emphasize the community events and some of the infrastructure improvements, but the problem is a lot of issues with her speech and how she conducts business. This is why things are so chaotic. She wants to discuss the need for metal detectors, discuss the issues of safety, but the problem is there's some core issues that's troubled the community, and it's based on financial mismanagement and alleged corruption. It seems like she likes to distract from the real issues. And when Haney speaks, first of all, she talks too quickly and she doesn't speak and say the whole word. I know I'm, I struggle with that too, it's on another level with Haney, and she's just extremely defensive. Township talk, she wants to talk about.
It's not, it, trust me, it's not a speech impediment or anything, she's just ignorant. She, it's not about her speaking fast, she says a whole bunch of stuff and just repeats herself all the time. She's not saying anything any differently than she has not said one thousand eight hundred ninety-two times on the phone. So, eh you know, you would think if you're repeating yourself over and over again, that you would master those terms and be able to speak them eloquently over an extended period of time. And unfortunately, she can't read two words at the same time without breaking a brain cell, so I will not give her credit to having any impediment issues, because she's saying the same thing over and over and over again. And somehow, she still can't pronounce simple terms such as politics. I I just, I, no, it's not a speech impediment, she's. I, I just, I, no, it's not a speech impediment. She's just stupid.
The administrative achievements and never talk about any of the missteps. She doesn't acknowledge the, the issues and the controversies surrounding her leadership. The FBI has issued subpoenas related to the allegations of corruption, including the misuse of taxpayer funds and questionable contracts awarded to campaign donors. These are serious accusations that demand transparency and accountability, yet Haneyard's speech offers little in terms of any concrete plans to address or rectify these issues. She keeps asserting that these, this criticism of her administration is largely unfounded and driven by negativity. It just seems as dismissive of genuine community concerns.
She never cared. She never cared.
Raised valid points about skyrocketing property taxes and mismanagement of funds and the overall direction of the village. But Haneyard labels these criticisms as just negativity. And it's just alienating the very people she's supposed to be serving and protecting. Remember, there's a lot of controversies. There's a lot of allegations of her weaponizing the police, spending taxpayer money on luxuries, involvement in a bribery case with a very shady construction company. It's a lot of problems. Haneyard wants to try to project a positive image on her administration and it just does not work. It's fallen short and we'll see why a little later of how badly it falls and how chaotic this whole situation is. So for instance, again, talk about money. Trustee Belcher had a lot to say about that. When it comes to financial mismanagement and lack of transparency, there's a lot of issues. Belcher, like many people, are worried about how the village money is being handled. She brought up the issue of vehicle leases.
The vehicles that we have, cuz we currently had at that time forty-six vehicles. You guys have bought thirty new vehicles, which totaled one million, one hundred five thousand dollars and some change. Lord. Um, my question to that was, and I asked, um, your, I don't know what Devante's uh title is at this point, but I asked in reference to uh, did we turn in some vehicles? Because when I looked at the meeting, it said based on, we were gonna be turning in vehicles for the lease, for the fleets. None of the, heard the uh guy Christopher Frye, who emailed me back, said that none of the vehicles was turned in. So if we didn't turn in any vehicles and we purchased twenty-eight new vehicles, cuz that's what the exact total is, twenty-eight new vehicles, where are those old vehicles?
Right.
The board had approved a contract for new vehicles for two thousand twenty-one, but there's no clear record of what happened to the old vehicles. Belcher wanted to know where these vehicles went and why the board wasn't informed. It seemed like it might be some shady business or just plain incompetence. More like those cars were probably sold or something. Also, Sam, the administration for not prioritizing spending on important things. Even though they approved leases to save money, the administration kept spending big on other things. This kind of mismanagement meant that the village couldn't pay its bills, leaving them in financial distress.
So again, these things are not being brought in front of the board. And what happens is we're going broke and we continue to say this, we continue to say this, and this is a big issue. So again, I'm gonna say there's a lack of transparency. We know that there's a lot of things that's going on that we don't even know about, such as with the credit card statements. They continue to refuse to give us those. They increased that credit card limit from twenty thousand a month to fifty thousand a month. And every month it's replenishing and things are being spent every month. And of course, it's unbannounced to the board. So again, residents, these are issues. These is, uh, these are the reasons why you see us have this back and forth. Because you all need to know how the money is being spent. You, we, I heard her make a comment regarding taxes. It's unbelievable to me that you sit here and tell a resident that we're the reason why their taxes are increasing when we all know that you don't follow a budget. So common
Define the term taxes. Define the term taxes. You brainless, soulless, you know, for super stupid. Define the term. Do you not, like, honestly, do, do you all understand that the IRS will surely come for her as well? You, you're gonna have the FBI and then the IRS, they got Al Capone. I mean, that man would have hit some people. The IRS is going to come for you. That the wages, the Department of Labor and the Department of Revenue is gonna come for you, unspecified checks. That you got so many government agencies that's about to come for you now, just from the firefighters. That's just stemming from the firefighters alone. Woo cha.
Tells us all, anybody who have a household, that when you don't follow a budget, you cause a deficit. Any money that's not approved for, so that million dollar skating rink that wasn't approved for, guess what? The taxpayers have to pay for it somehow. So whether the board approved it or not, we are all still paying for it. Because again, with a deficit, anytime there's overspending, that difference is on the backs of the taxpayers.
The credit card limit being bumped from
That would mean that she would have to know simple arithmetic to be able to comprehend half of what their lady just said. I mean, when you can't comprehend two plus two, I don't expect you to understand complex things such as taxes or percentages or fractions.
Twenty thousand to fifty thousand a month without the board's approval. She pointed out that this limit was maxed out every month, which raised red flags about where the money was going. It seemed like the administration was spending money like there's no tomorrow without any oversight. And then a really big obvious issue, and Belcher talked about this, was the no-show from the key financial personnel at these meetings. The village officer and the CPA who should be there to answer financial questions and ensure accountability were missing. They're always missing.
They're always missing. Answer, a definite answer. Have we received six point eight million dollars? Okay, why is the finance person, last month, I asked the same thing. Why the finance person not here? No answer. It's Monday again. The finance, what is Monday her old days? Well, maybe we should change the meeting. I don't know, but it don't make no sense that we have to keep doing this.
Just to follow up on Trustee Belcher's point, after last meeting, I did email the CPA and ask them to be present or in attendance. Uh, they responded saying that they were willing. They were actually here in the parking lot and were not allowed into the building.
Whoa. Whoa, what? What? Oh, God, come on, man. I asked the same thing. Why the finance person not here? No answer. It's Monday again. The finance, what is Monday her old days? Well, maybe we should change the meeting. I don't know, but it don't make no sense that we have to keep doing this.
Just to follow up on Trustee Belcher's point, after last meeting, I did email the CPA and ask them to be present or in attendance. Uh, they responded saying that they were willing. They were actually here in the parking lot and were not allowed into the building.
Alright.
That's all mighty.
Alright, Carla.
She be tricking us.
This is a huge problem. Maybe some of these questions could be answered. Maybe some issues can be resolved if the people who are checking the numbers can answer some basic questions. But let's see what Mayor Haneyard had to say in response to this.
Okay, so, wow. In the end, everybody made their little victory speech. Hey, great. But the truth is
Woo cha. Tell that to the judge when you stand before the judge and criminal charges down your neck. The federal lawsuits alone and the lawsuit from the fire department is gonna easily take care of it. The, the firefighter's lawsuit is, is going to sit her ass down for real. I'm telling you, their lawsuit is gonna be epic and they need to sue for no less than like fifty million dollars. Reach for the stars on that. You have literally brought pain and grief to firefighters who do daunting jobs that you will never comprehend. Nor will you ever think to do. This is her famously go out here and fight fires. She's paying a makeup artist and someone that does her hair. What, five thousand a month or something? It, it, it's three thousands a month. It's like fifteen hundred dollars every, every time she, she pays him. It's like fifteen hundred dollars each time. Obscene amount of money. Child, bro.
Don't pay people cuz you pull them off the warrant list. The resident's not
Yeah, no, we're not paying for your musician. We're not paying your hairstylist.
Yet, y'all just took a ton of people
They're not paying your hairstylist.
They did the work, right? Then pay, approve it.
No, we're not paying for your hairstylist. They're not paying for your hairstylist.
Hey, uh, we're not paying people. That's because the board chooses not to pay certain people. You take certain people off, that's called targeting. And I get it, because you guys want to control and narrative everything, but you're the one creating all the chaos and all the misunderstanding, cuz once again, I've stated before, if you really wanted answers, you would, you would call. I always say call me, none of y'all call me. And you would come and sit down and talk about whatever you feel don't like, don't understand, but you guys don't do that. It's all about a show for everybody now. And that's what's so sad.
You know what? Call it what you want, you still gonna prison at the end of the day. The FBI is coming for you, dummy. So get it all out, because they're watching this video. They're watching all town hall videos. And they're following every little path. They're following the money. Oh, yes, they are. And let me tell you something, none of your cronies are gonna go to prison for you. So y'all let her get all this nonsense out while she sits here incriminating herself, lies like hell. Cuz all of this stuff is gonna be questioned under oath and affirmation. And guess what? Her telling the truth is something she's also not capable of doing. So to the granny that said something about us getting along, um, why don't you just get on her singularly about her telling the truth for once and reading a book? You're not finna get millions of people around the world that's watching what's happening with super stupid to believe some alternate version of reality, where laws aren't laws and facts aren't facts. You, you're not gonna do it. You, you are not, you're not that smart to brainwash people on that level. The fact that you're there doesn't mean that nothing's happening. It just means that when the moment comes, it's gonna be a permanent takedown. The firefighter need to hear about their lawsuit. Please file y'all lawsuit and report her to the Department of Labor so they can file a federal lawsuit.
Well, obviously, the same old, same old. And then Keith Freeman tried to jump in and tried to tackle some of these concerns. Let's see how well he did.
The lease was signed October fifteenth. I don't need you, me, and Keith, I mean, and Chris Frye on there. What my conversation was to you about or to the board or whoever is running the day-to-day operations is that if these are something that, not even the cars, the fact that selling anything that's a surplus goes in front of the board of trustees, is that, am I not right?
You're right about that, but we didn't have a conversation about that on the phone.
That, that's true.
Mentioned that on the phone. What you mentioned to me was that you would like to place on the agenda a discussion item. You didn't say, and I quote, "I want to discuss this prior to me putting it on the agenda." That's one. The second thing is that part of that agreement may say that you are swapping out whatever those vehicles are. And I can't have an intelligent conversation with you about that if it's not in front of me. I think to be helpful to one another, so I can be prepared, so that the mayor can be prepared and everyone in our administration can be prepared, it would have been, it would have been better served for us to have that conversation prior to now.
That's fine. Do, do, take the cars out. The issue is, anything that goes as a surplus that's being sold by the village of Dalton, does it go in front of the board of trustees? Yes or no?
Yes. Now, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
It don't matter.
Do you have a copy of the contract with Enterprise in front of you that says that, hey, listen, these are a list of vehicles that could be swapped out that was already prior approved for the board?
Why don't you have a list of it? And I got the email that says, hi, Kiana, attached is the current active lease schedules as well as the list in the Excel of current vehicles on the lease with Enterprise. I don't see where we ever receive a vehicle to sell on your behalf or to trade in. Also, I've attached a master lease agreement in case that you need it for a reference. I'll work on pulling all of the invoices. Please let me know about payment.
So you answered the question yourself.
No.
The question, listen, no, no, listen, listen, wait, hold on.
That's not the question, because I have a separate list of Excel sheet of cars that been sold.
You're not listening to what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that if you guys already have a master list of the vehicles that are supposed to be sold.
It's not you guys.
So yeah, he didn't do a great job either. Obviously, you see, he admitted that he didn't have the necessary
Dancing around, this is the same man being charged with bankruptcy fraud. So I can't take anything financial seriously with him either way. Enjoy prison, you moron. Alright.
Questions about the vehicle leases. You think maybe he should show up and actually be prepared for the meeting, but those cars may be so old, he doesn't wanna talk about that. But when you think about it, his responses came off as evasive, failing to provide the transparency and clarity that Belcher and the public were looking for. And then for the big moment, we are basically at the end of this meeting. Now, there's supposed to be another meeting after that, so they kind of finished a regular board meeting, had a special board meeting. And during the special board meeting, they have residents go back and speak. And obviously, this happens.
Like, you're finally catching up.
Whoa.
And, um, literally, I think that what the people are asking for is not unreasonable. And it is really interesting to see somebody sitting in the people's business, speaking about not being prepared to answer questions of an elected official. And to think that they can do that with an attitude or sass or zestiness is a little disrespectful. And so I would encourage, uh, Mr. Freeman to make sure that the next time you come, you do like Kiana and just bring all your damn files. And then the last thing that I'm gonna say is, I did notice that my good fellow advocate Andrew Holmes is in the building. And that's why, literally, I wish that I would have looked up before I go up to state because as it relates to you, you're the reason that I'm here. And you're the reason that everybody is going through what they're going through as it relates to an advocate, because you're supposed to bring one. But you've been accused of something that's very shameful. And the least you could have done is given us a very basic and comprehensive statement, literally giving sympathy and understanding to a vic, a survivor, be it that you felt that it was true or not, and you could have at least declared your innocence, which noted you haven't done. And so I'm simply asking you right now, because me sitting here looking at your face, I'm utterly disgusted. Because how dare you take your ass back outside and start with any family when there's a woman with a child that's waiting on a responsive, a response from you, literally as an elected official and as an advocate about what you did. Was it consensual? Was it not? Did you that woman? Did you put something in her drink? And damn it, you gonna answer, and you gonna answer me. Promise you that. Yeah, man, I do recognize. Yo, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet.
Hey, hey, I don't order you out of the Look at him tonight. Come on, come on. Jedediah will beat your ass. What you doing? Talk about, come on, come on, you nasty muskrat. Y'all know he look like the Hamburglar. That was Cedar Airlines. Jedediah will well on you. Talk about, come on, come on. Did y'all see that hand movement? How you talking about, like, you talking about, come on, come on, like, he gonna do something.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bet.
Come on, come on, come on. You see his hand is right here. Jedediah, bro. Oh, Jedediah, come on, man. Bro, 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 bro. Bro. Jedediah, come on, man. Come on, man. What, what, what good is this gonna do, man? Come on, bro. I'm, I'm, man, look, I, I, look. Oh, man. Come on, man. This, this isn't gonna, all this, all they gonna do is, is sit here and say, see, look what happens when we do stuff. Oh, my God, come on, man. Oh, man, come on, man. Yeah, yeah. Yo.
The interesting thing about this is that Andrew Holmes was going to say something. He was gonna finally speak and it went the way it did. Seems like that was a great move right there. It looks like perhaps if Andrew Holmes was allowed to speak, we can hear exactly what he had to say about this very serious issue. But unfortunately
And then it could have been used against him. This is why I said, at this point, you all have to let these people bury them, themselves in their own holes. Let them speak because the FBI is watching. And then they could end up having this used against them in a court of law. Jedediah, it didn't, that didn't help anything, bro. Listen to mama. Listen to mama. Alright, you, you gotta calm down. You have a case in and of itself with Chief Lacy following you in a whole nother district. You could have filed with the Illinois State Department and reported him for doing that. This does not serve any purpose at all. And all it does, even the more, is, oh, look, see? Y'all, 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 uh, y'all bringing, y'all here for a show. Y'all here for a show. Come on, man. What is getting up there gonna do? You could, you, even if you got hands on him and you beat his ass, still what? Cuz now you're going to jail. And you're going to jail by the most corrupt police And you're going to jail by the most corrupt police officers right now on earth. You don't, in the US, not say on earth, because that would be comparing them to like, what's in Russian time? No, in the US. You gotta think clear. This, this, this doesn't help anything. Come on, bro. I know you pissed, but you gotta, you gotta let these people bury themselves. You can't, you can't just go up there and just go straight out trying to just slam dunk and fight people, man. Come on, man. Come on, man.
As many residents tried to talk about, trying to have some peace, trying to figure out the hard issues, trying to have some ability to speak without going into chaos, we got some chaos. The FBI is the only one that can fix this situation.
Yes.
That's it. We're all waiting for the FBI to figure out what's the next move here. This situation is beyond fixing. This is too chaotic, it's too emotional. We need, we need, at this point, the feds need to go in and start regulating. I don't see how any of these people currently constructed or ever going to work together. It just doesn't, it doesn't seem like that's going to happen. And until there's some changes, we're just gonna keep seeing this kind of issue happening in these meetings. Serious changes need to happen. But what do you guys think about what happened at the end there? I actually want to know your thoughts on how that all unfolded at the end there. Cause that came out of left field and I wasn't anticipating that at all. I've seen some physical-ish skirmages back and forth, but that usually doesn't end the meeting. But what do you guys think? Let me know in the comments below. Thank you for taking the time to watch this video.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, no, we can't, we can't have it. All right, Jedidiah, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta think like, this is gonna affect a lot of people on a bigger level. And, you know, you, you, you going up there trying to beat somebody up. Like, it would be different if you caught him on the street and he stepped on your feet, something like that. And then he decided to pump you or something with an arm. And then, you know, you like, excuse me, and he scrapped first and then you whip his ass. Like, that's fine, that's self-defense. But you being the aggressor and you did this, you know, on national TV, you can't do this. This, we all know that Super Stupid is full of crap and he who will not be named is, is even worse. But the best way to handle them, you're gonna have to handle them in a court of law. The fire department is going to have to file a lawsuit. And it will be massive. You're talking about over twenty plus people being affected in the fire department under the protection of a union collective bargaining agreements. I'm telling you, unions are very powerful. And I told you all, they get in there and they do a show of force. She couldn't say anything bad about the firefighters. She say the same old nonsense over and over again. At this point, I don't care what she thinks. What goes on in a court of law is what I do care about. And I don't make my comments about her, just loosey goosey. Because I don't agree to Jedidiah's in here trying to fight anybody. That man needs to be, he who will not be named, needs to be in, in jail for a very long time. But beating him up gives him some sort of latitude. I, I wanted him to just speak on the record, even if we sat here and I was even more disgusted with it, just so the FBI could hear it and use it against him. So I, it's, this isn't, you know, there, there's no reason for that, bro. Come on, man. Oh Lord, okay, so no, I, I do not agree to attacking and assaulting anybody. This, that, that's not necessary. It'd be different if he who will not be named bumped the Jedidiah, like I said, and forced him to have to defend himself. And you laid a good one into his face. But you just going up there, you went out of your way while he was sitting down. He was defenseless. It, it wasn't like he was a threat physically to you. And you charged up there, you can't do that, bro. You cannot do that. And this is not a matter of we need to just work together. No, this is a matter of Super Stupid must go. The FBI will come in. The fire department must file a lawsuit. And they're gonna have to report the theft of wages to the Department of Labor and get the commissioner of, of, the, the fire safety and insurance in on this. So they can file federal lawsuits. That is gonna be where you do the most damage in the court of law, something she cannot control. She cannot control the judicial branch of government. That's why I keep saying, we got two other branches of government here. You got the state legislation that has more power than she does. They could create legislation to sit her ass down somewhere. They did that when it came to her trying to manipulate income, salaries for the next incoming man. Cause she's not gonna be reelected. She is not. And guess what the state legislator did? Oh, we're gonna pass some legislation, we're gonna shut that down. That's exactly what they did. I told you all they could do. They was gonna override it. The state can pass legislation to undo that. That's not an issue. They, they're just gonna have to do it. And that's exactly what they did. And the same goes with the fire department. When they file their lawsuit, I promise you, if they can get those to government, the Department of Labor, Department of Revenue, and the, uh, commissioner of the, the safety, fire, safety and insurance in on it. Those are government agencies, federal agencies that could issue, that could file federal complaints and have federal lawsuits filed in court. She's not gonna have any room to, to stand on anything. And she definitely can't back up anything with any evidence. I promise you all, it would, it would literally cripple and damage her on so many levels, it's not going to be funny. And then the FBI's will come in and deal that final blow. That is the best strategy of all. Take her to the branch of government that she has no power in. And that being the judicial branch. The AG's a coward, the DA is ridiculous. The government, the governor is just, he's like hands off, he act like he scared as well. When he went higher than her. But you have to take her behind the court and get these lawsuits going. Get them cranked up. Let the federal lawsuits come through with these federal government agencies. Let them start investigations as well. The Department of Labor will have a hell of investigation. Hell, get the IRS in. Tax fraud, that, that, it's almost inevitable for tax fraud and, and the insurance fraud, the theft of wages, all of those things get in easily, hand in hand. She doesn't give financial statements and disclosures. She violates federal laws regarding the Open Records Act, state statutes. It is, I mean, it's endless. But you're gonna have to take her through the court of law. Because that's, that's the one sector of government she has no power, none. And you just gonna have to keep taking it through it. It ain't no evil act because she can't say that stuff in court either. Guess what she can't do? She can't stand before a judge and say half that stuff she says in the town hall meetings. Take her where she has no power and keep dealing them blows in court. I am so glad to see the fire department come today to that meeting to take a stand. And one thing it has done is, is it got her shaken up. She didn't say nothing completely bad about him like that, like she wasn't disrespecting him to the extent. I honestly was expecting her to be just as nasty about that. But she's like, you know, the fire department, you know, I'm gonna look into it and everything. But yeah, you know, because they have a whole lot more power than you think. And because she's not that bright, she's gonna have to learn it the hard way. They're gonna deal a hard blow in a court of law when they file their lawsuit. There's no working anything out unless she comes overnight with a plan to say, give them all this money back, pay back everything, get them out collections. Like she will literally have to give them the money that they're owed and some for pain and suffering to avoid their lawsuit. She gonna have to settle. And that settlement does not need to be something simple. Get what you deserve, five years of this? Get five years worth of a settlement out of her behind. Whether you get it out of her voluntarily or you got to get it involuntary in a court of law. Five years worth of this pain and suffering you all have been going through in the fire department. You go file that and put it in a lawsuit. That's how you do that. You take all that they got into a lawsuit. And you have that compelling evidence to make it a slam dunk. That's how you handle that. Report her ass to government agencies. Enough public pressure, they start investigations, they'll file a federal petition, it'll get done. But y'all have to, you have to start directing, know how to holler for help. I've said this before, you gotta know how to scream for help. And the best help you can get right now, when it comes to Super Stupid, is in a court of law. And I double dogged her to go into a court of law and stand before a judge with all that ignorant nonsense. They will hold you in contempt and have your behind incarcerated, even if it's for forty-eight hours, anything at this point, just to get your attention. And honestly, it might not even faze her because you done been in jail before anyway. But either way, that's my commentary on this and videos, hour and forty minutes. I had to do this. I hope you guys enjoyed this. I know it's pretty lengthy. I might break this up. But if I don't, it's hour and forty minutes, it's a good podcast, listen. Um, thank you Hannibal is Hungry. I enjoy watching and reacting to his comment, uh, commentary, his videos. Um, and I, I just, you know, Jedidiah, come on, bro. You gonna have to put out a video about this and, and apologize to the people of Dalton. Because it, it just, it, it's gonna set them back and you giving leverage to Super Stupid. And she, she, she has no standing. So let's hope the fire department go ahead and file a lawsuit. Department of Labor, Department of Revenue, figure out what these unspecified checks and all this stuff coming from. Y'all question them checks. Question them, think twice about them before you go cash it in. All right, don't just sit and, and, and just run with it. No, you need to question it. Make sure they're investigated properly because what you don't want is the FBI knocking on your door about unspecified checks. I told you all that in the last, and look what happened. They, they, well, we got three unspecified checks. See that? Please understand the FBI is watching and I can guarantee you that the fire department already reached out to the FBI. Talking about these unspecified checks here, trying to figure out what's going on. All the vendors need to do that. That hunger and greed of money is gonna land you in prison for many years and you're not gonna like that at all. You gonna wish to God you never even came across Super Stupid's path in order for her to give you a check before you sit in prison for fifteen to twenty years. It's not worth it. Question the checks. Call the FBI. There's something we need to add to this investigation, y'all. There's money coming from somewhere, some, something's happening. And I'm not trying to be a part in that shysty and ridiculous. Report it. Good job to the fire department. The fact that they brought that up lets me know somebody listened to my video. But this is, this is no, it's no good to, to try to attack people. Come on now. All right. That's it for today. Thank you guys for tuning in. Lady luck out. Peace.